Ken O'Leary, would you lead us in prayer for this?
Absolutely. Let's pray. Gracious God, we're so thankful for this beautiful day you've provided us. We are at awe of the beauty of spring and the renewal of life we see around us. Blessed is the gathering of all those attending, God our hearts and minds as the bids of this great city is conducted. I also ask your protecting hand be upon each one of the wonderful city employees as they do their jobs. All this I ask in your son Jesus' holy name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's start with the roll call.
Mayor Mike Green.
Here.
City Attorney Darren Rice.
Here.
Alderman Julie Eccleberry.
Here.
Alderman Cody Adaberry.
Here.
Alderman Clifford Reaver.
Here.
Alderman Tyler Lampley.
Here.
Alderman Eugene McGill.
Present.
Alderman Jerry Lizzenby.
Here.
Alderman Terry Stahl.
Here.
Alderman Gary Moore.
Present.
Oh, President accounted for approval of minutes for minutes of the April twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two meeting are presented for approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Alderman McGill, seconded by Alderman Moore to approve the minutes of the April twenty-sixth meeting. Roll call vote Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adaberry.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Approval of bills, current bills were presented for payment after examination of the listed bills, do we have a motion to pass them?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Alderman Reaver, seconded by Alderman Lampley to approve paying the bills for this meeting. Roll call vote McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adaberry.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
I'm staying.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
Okay. Time now for public comments, if you have comments for the city council, please come forward, give us your name and where you live, and you have three minutes to be able to address the city council. Anybody wants to speak to the city council tonight?
By authority of my man, ma'am.
Please come up to the front, yes ma'am, come up to the front, tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Kathleen Taylor, I live here in Fairfield at the Victorian on Main, which is what I'm here to talk to you about, you're going to be going in on our liquor license later, I'll address that. The Victorian on Main, can you hear me okay?
There you go.
Is a boutique inn, bed and breakfast, we've been in business since the middle of twenty-nineteen. Now in twenty-twenty-two, we are launching our events, uh, business weddings, teas, bottle showers, funeral, not funerals, sorry, culinary events. Um, we have started with teas. Our first tea that we had, we had three people from Denton and one from West Fenford and four people from Fairfield. Um, we are not just a Fairfield business, and that's what we want you to understand. One of the things we do to bring tourists and tourist dollars to Fairfield, and we've had people as far away as Canada, Norway, Brazil, uh, South Korea, Puerto Rico, and we've had several people who are world travelers that compare us to other motel, uh, B and Bs, excuse me, I'm nervous. Um, the last week, um, I don't know if any of you knew this or not, the state of Illinois put us on the top gen list of places to stay in Illinois, in all of Illinois. B and Bs, spas, well spas don't really have, uh, rest, uh, I don't know, maybe they do, I don't know. But anyway, they were in the list, there were several spas, but number number ten, and we were above two of the very prestigious places in Illinois. One was in northern and one was in central Illinois. Um, I don't know what they judged us on, I'm assuming it was reviews because nobody talked to us about it, I didn't even know there was such a list. Um, what we are looking for, since we are a luxury hotel, boutique hotel, we need to be able to compete with other B and Bs. Our competition is not here in Fairfield, we're not wanting to compete with the liquor stores or with the restaurants or anybody else. What we are wanting to do is to be able to provide quality wines and beer to people that are our guests or our ticketed events or our showers, things like that, that want it. It will not be sold in gross except on our property and, uh, unless somebody carries off an empty bottle or something like that, it won't with the property. We don't want to compete with anybody, we're not going to get any pricing wars or anything like that, we just want to be able to serve quality wine with our food. Uh, especially if we do culinary events, we want to use local wineries as well as California wines. My son-in-law and daughter own it in, they live in Los Angeles, and they, they are very well versed in wines, and that's what we are looking at. They travel quite a bit, and they're wanting to bring our standards, our, uh, uh, products up equal with whatever anybody else can get somewhere else. And, uh, the, uh, at the Victorian, the beer and wine we offered to guests, I just said this, and ticketed advance. We're not a bar, we're not a restaurant, we don't want to compete with anybody.
Sorry ma'am, we're running close to being out of time, so I.
Okay. I think I've covered just about everything.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your opportunity.
Take care. All right, anyone else wants to speak to the city council tonight? Okay, then I have to admit, uh, an error on my part, I know that's going to be hard for some of you to believe. I, uh, I talked about a month ago with Matt Robert and Ivan Dozier from the NRCS. I hope that the city council will give me leave to be able to have them come up for just a few minutes to be able to give us a, uh, a thirty thousand foot view of what I have reported to the city council about them being able to secure federal funds to be able to work on the Johnson Creek watershed, and if it's okay with the city council, if, if, gentlemen, if you wouldn't mind coming up and giving us a little overview, we'd really appreciate it, thank you. And please take, accept my apology that I hadn't put you on the, uh, the agenda.
That's quite all right, yes, I'm Ivan Dozier, I'm the state conservationist for USDA's Natural Resources Conservation Service, and down here, yes, we hope to deliver some good news about some funding that we've been able to secure for the city of Fairfield to do a preliminary investigation of feasibility report. Kind of a fancy thing to say, we're going to look into some of the flooding that's occurred in the area, and also maybe some things you've been working on for a long time with trying to restore the lakeside reservoir, and maybe do some things on Atkinson Forest, they're all in that same watershed, and the program that we're working under is something called the Watershed and Flood Prevention Operations Program. It was just recently refunded, you might say, Ivan, why didn't you come back down here and tell us about this a long time ago? Uh, the, the funding for this program kind of dried up about twenty years ago or was tied up, and it has recently been released in the twenty-eighteen farm bill, and, uh, been reading about some of the things you do, uh, down here, been trying to do for a long time, thought it looked like it might be a good fit, and the good thing is, no obligation to you, I feel like one of those infomercials here, but there really isn't an obligation. You go through this preliminary feasibility report, and if the project is feasible, it could lead to funding also for implementation of all or part of the plant. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn things over to Matt Robert, he's my state conservation engineer, and he's kind of, uh, in charge of this particular program, and he'll give you the quick overview, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, first off, like Ivan was talking about, uh, you guys got accepted for funding for the preliminary investigation. Uh, we just, uh, started the process of getting that funding through so we can get the consultants hired to actually get it done. That should take probably about a month to, uh, to about six weeks. After that, they will have, in three months, they will complete this report, and then after that report is done, they'll give it to you, uh, the mayor and city council for you guys to review, and also to our state conservationist, Ivan. And from there, you guys could look at it and see whether it's worth continuing on with, uh, this program and continue getting funding with it, or you guys want to walk away. If you decide to go on to the next, uh, phase, the next phase would be a watershed, uh, a watershed plan. And we, once again, we'd pay for that a hundred percent, we'd go through, and that watershed plan, what it is, is a more detailed operation of what's going on here, really gets down to the ditty gritty what the problem is, which I know you guys have, already have a hydrology report, we'd be using that, but we'd be going a little bit further in. The key thing about it is, it would also work with your stakeholders, other people involved inside this watershed and with the flooding, and it would also work with them, we're trying to find the best alternatives, and then possibly the best solution that you guys would choose from. From there, then it would go into the design phase, which again, if you guys decide to go that route, and if you go the design route, once again, we've funded a hundred percent, and it would go into, uh, that funding, and we'd design whatever is needed and so forth, and then from there, construction. Construction, it all depends on what is actually being constructed, what are the actual problems and solutions on the cost share rate. It's as high as a hundred percent, it's as low as fifty percent. But that's all I can, I mean, you could throw out different things, but right now I can't tell you anymore about how much it's going to cost. But is there any question?
I mean, you've seen some of our preliminary, I mean, we've done the different studies and stuff like that, and so you think overall that it's a viable candidate to get at least something done and fix the issues that we have, I mean.
I think, yes, because one of the, the main, there's seven resource concerns that we work with inside this program, one of them is flood control and flooding problems, you have definitely a flooding issue here. It's just whether or not we can come together and find a proper solution for you that works inside our program.
Yeah.
But the preliminary investigation is going to spell out whether your goals meet our goals, and it could work inside the program.
Yeah, because they can come back and say it's more on the creek, not on lakeside lake, or it's up in Atkinson, or it's here or there, and it may not meet the goal that we have to, you know, get the lake back to lakeside, and then maybe do whatever mitigation we need to do in Johnson Creek and.
Exactly, and also, it also makes sure that all our criteria within that program meets also, so we make sure that we're spending taxpayer money on what we're supposed to, so that's what it's about.
And those steps beyond the first step, are they, are they funded by the, now?
The waters, the wa, they're not funded right now, they're not. It all, because we don't go towards that funding until you look at, uh, preliminary investigation first, and you guys agree upon it, and, and Mr. Dozier agrees upon it, and then they send it forward.
But the funding is there at the state level, like you, I mean, I think what you mean is, isn't even going to be available.
It, it's federal funding and the, and the program is funded.
The program, that's what, I think that's what you mean, not that we've like approved to have the funding, that it is actually.
Right, yeah.
Sorry, I apologize, yeah, the funding is at the federal level, yes, yeah.
Is there X amount of dollars in a free-for-all to get it?
I think it's two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars a year, uh, and then, of course, with the new farm bill coming up in, uh, two thousand twenty-three, it sounds like it's going to be more than that. Right now, uh, this year, we ac- actually got an extra one billion dollars in the bipartisan infrastructure law, or the, uh, the Jobs Improvement Act, and, uh, so we're spending that also on these type of projects.
There was a remarkable figure about how much the Johnson Creek watershed drains, how many acres it drains, and I, I, I want to say it was like twenty-four hundred.
Yeah, we, uh, whenever we did it, it was right around three thousand, and we stopped it actually furthest south of the, uh, waste treatment facility. So that's the watershed that we are looking at, and the top of it is at the Atkinson Forest up there, and part of that actually goes to the other watershed.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much.
No problem.
For your help, Ivan, you're, you're, you're a Mill Shoals.
Mill Shoals, ninety, graduated from the Mill Community High, yes.
Wonderful, all right, thanks for making the trip down.
No problem.
And we appreciate your help.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Uh, agenda item number one, ordinance amending, amending the liquor code to add a new bed and breakfast license and to define the measurement of one hundred feet from a church. Counselor, can you help us through this?
Yeah, um, that's fine.
I'm sorry, yes sir.
Fine, um, yeah, basically, uh, you see, we're adding a, or seeking to add an additional classification for bed and breakfasts. Uh, this was requested, I think, by Scott Boyett, the, the owner of the, um, Victorian on Main, and we, um, have been sending this to him to see, you know, how this worked, or just what he had in mind, and it was, at least as to the the classification of the, the proposed new class Q, um, classification, and it basically would, if approved, it would authorize, uh, the consumption of, uh, retail, or allow the sell of retail, sell alcoholic liquor on the premises for consumption of those who are allowed on the premises. Um, and then the second part of this, uh, is basically, uh, we're, we're seeking to explain and define what it means to be a hundred feet from a church, this comes up an awful lot, um, uh, people, some entities want to, you know, and basically this is, uh, setting forth what's existing law in Illinois. Uh, basically, you measure the hundred feet from the worship portion of a church, uh, to the property line of the place that's wanting to, um, sell alcohol. Uh, there was a case in two thousand seven that, that kind of clarified that, and the thinking was, you know, there's an awful lot of questions, get lobbed it towards city hall, and if we had it in our own ordinance, um, it might, you know, provide further clarification, as opposed to having to ask the attorney, and then I have to, you know, find, uh, you know, what's in the case, but it's, you gotta kind of dig in the details. Here it's all set out and, and clear, and so there's really no, no question about that. But, um, does anybody have any questions about any of this? It's basically two different things that we figured, you know, we could, um, wrap it all up into one and for your consideration.
As far as the bread and breakfast part of it, is that, you made the mention invited, is that, uh, a little clarification?
Sure, um, that was something, uh, that was brought up by, um, if, if they're on the site with the permission of the operator of, of the bed and breakfast, uh, my initial draft left that out. Uh, I, I didn't have that in there, Scott Boyett requested that we put that in there because they might have wedding receptions, uh, there, and if we limited it to the people that are the actual registered occupants of it, um, you know, that would be, they, they wouldn't be able to fulfill that, what they're wanting to do, uh, you know, have a wedding reception there.
Ticketed events is what he used the word.
Yeah, ticketed events.
So you're going to have to, you're going to have to have a ticket to purchase a beverage?
I don't have, uh, a, a ticket as such, it, it was kind of basically, you know, if they're at that place, um, you know, such as with a wedding reception or, or something, some event like that, um, then that would be fine. I explained to him that, you know, the city of Fairfield, you know, we have basically the, have the, not really wanting to create a bar with this permit.
And that's, and that's my question, you, you know, if somebody walks off the street, are they invited to have a drink?
Uh, no, it would basically be those who are on the, you know, with the permission of, you know, the operator there, and, you know, if it turns out, I, I suppose, you know, if it's starting to be run that way and not just with the vents being, you know, uh, affiliated with a wedding reception or, or things like that, then, you know, that, that would probably run afoul of, you know, you're not allowed to, uh, have a bar, so.
And your new definition of, of a hundred feet is from the pulpit?
Uh, it's from the, the building.
From the building wall?
The building, yeah, the exterior part of the place of worship, so now the reason I think that that is in the laws, like, you didn't have, like, the property line that would consist of like a big parking lot, it would actually go from the, the church building to the property line of the place that's wanting the license.
So it's from the wall to the property line?
Yeah, yes.
Any other questions?
Is that, is that Illinois wall there, or is that a state's?
Yeah, well, that was a, a case that, uh, they clarified that, uh, it was a two thousand and seven case, that's where I got the language at, on the hundred feet part, uh, it was, uh, called Daly versus Lake Ubeyard, um, I've got a copy, if anybody wants to read it, but it's, that, that's where I got, you know, the, the language, and so, yeah, it's on a statute, but it's a case law, yeah.
Any other questions? I entertain a motion then.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Alderman Stahl, seconded by Alderman Lampley, to approve the ordinance amending the liquor code to add a new bed and breakfast license and to define the hundred feet measurement from a church. Roll call vote, Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adaberry.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
No.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Uh, item two, agenda item two, resolution setting the dates for council meetings for next fiscal year. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you tell us about this?
This is just something we do every year, it's required by state statute that we do a resolution setting for those dates, um, for regular city council meetings, and they have to be displayed here at city hall. So it's just a state requirement that we do this.
I'll make that motion. No second?
Who will second?
Cleveland.
Cleveland. Motion by Alderman Eccleberry, seconded by Alderman Reaver, to approve the resolution setting forth the dates for city council meetings for the next fiscal year. Roll call vote, Reaver.
Yes.
Stahl.
Yes.
Adaberry.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Agenda item three, we're going to stay with you, Madam Clerk, approval to seek bids for the sale of vehicles and equipment.
I've been working with, uh, street and bridge leadman as well as the, uh, garage leadman, and we do have, uh, several items that we would like to offer for sale, there are some vehicles, uh, some mowers, some equipment. Uh, there's quite a long list of items that we would like to seek bids for, and since there's such a long list, I think, uh, a lot of times we do a turnaround of two weeks, that maybe it would be better to do a turnaround, give them two meetings in order to.
First meeting in June.
Yeah, to award the bid, actually, the first meeting in June. And, um, something a little different this time, since there are so many items, I prepared a bidder sheet that they must complete, because, for example, there's a couple of different, uh, nineteen-seventy-seven trucks, so I need to know for sure which truck they're actually bidding on, so everyone will be required to fill out the bidder sheet on what they want to bid on. So if that's okay for me to set forth the motion for selling these items, I would, uh, entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Eccleberry, seconded by McGill, to approve seeking bids for the sale of vehicles and equipment. Roll call vote, Stahl.
Yes.
Adaberry.
Yes.
Eccleberry.
Yes.
Lampley.
Yes.
Lizzenby.
Yes.
McGill.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Reaver.
Yes.
That passes. Uh, agenda item four, uh, I'd like to ask the council if we could, that's the, uh, the FOP contract, I, I'd like to be able to, uh, go into executive session, but I, I'd like for us, if we could, get through the rest of the agenda before we do that, uh, is that okay with everybody? Is that okay? We'll come back to four, it'll be after the executive session if we're going to vote on it tonight, is that okay?
What else is?
Uh, there's a mayor's report in.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that was.
No, no, I, I, trust me, I, I slipped the, uh, the two guys from Chambina, but I will slip something else on. Okay, so, that means we go to the mayor's report. Our inspections of the Maple Hill Cemetery over the last couple days have been mostly positive despite a very rainy spring. Uh, the new crew has been very aggressive in keeping the cemetery cut and trimmed, and we will continue to watch as we near the always important Memorial Day weekend, but, um, I've been through there a number of times because this is when we started running into some problems last year, and it, it looks, at least in my view, pretty good. City police have started marking vehicles parked for more than two hours on Main and Delaware. This, this is becoming a bigger problem as more and more apartments, uh, are going into the upper levels of some of our buildings in downtown that we're going to have to find a solution to. The residents of the apartments on the streets need to find some alternative long-term parking spots. Um, we'll also be installing, we're, we're looking at a couple of more, uh, two-hour parking signs in the downtown area. Uh, an ordinance is already in place that designates the streets that are supposed to only be two-hour parking. It's hard for people to do business if nobody can park anywhere near their business. There have been several positive economic development, uh, pieces of nu- news inside the city over the last few weeks. One downtown merchant reported over seventy-five out-of-town retail clients. One downtown merchant reported over seventy-five out-of-town retail clients, uh, by using, uh, credit card receipts. Seventy-five, uh, out-of-city clients over the last thirty days. Uh, we also learned of the expansion of a commercial recycling business on the South Highway. L and E Recycling LLC will be tearing down some of the older buildings around the old Southern Lumber Company, uh, one of those, uh, buildings that's gonna come down as the former service station across the street right on the, the railroad, uh, tracks, which has sort of been an eyesore for a long time. L and E specializes in the recycling of cardboard cores that are used at Champ Labs. The city met with the, uh, County Health Department last week to discuss, uh, future electronic recycling events. This time, the Health Department will secure space in the former recycling center, which is, uh, just south of the, uh, police station. The city would offer the, uh, use of a forklift and an operator. Electronics would be stored in the building instead of putting them directly onto semi-trailers. By doing that, you can, uh, expand the amount of time, hopefully be able to take care of the pent-up need for this. Put it in the building and then be able to order the amount of trucks to come and be able to take care of it. It, it was a good meeting. The Fairfield Public Library had its open house this weekend, and I, I, if you don't, um, if you get a chance, you need to go see it, it's beautiful. It's just really been, uh, expertly done, it's such a treasure for our city. Uh, they, they spent sixty thousand dollars, uh, none of it came from the city, it was funded by a gift from the Babe Ward Estate, and so, uh, not only, you know, prudently done, but, but very tasteful. I've been in the office one, one year, I just wanted to let you know that I'll be doing my annual appointments at the next meeting on May twenty-fourth, I think that's about when I did it last year, so that's what I'll be doing, uh, next time. Uh, the other side of this is just a recounting, I, I, I promised you, and I kinda got away with, uh, away from it for a couple of weeks, just a few, uh, headlines from the different departments. Um, I was out at the airport today 'cause they're looking at, uh, doing, uh, more work, working with the Boyleston Water Company to be able to get some more water at a different couple of places where they're gonna be mixing some of the, uh, herbicides and pesticides that go into the, uh, the plains out there with the ag monkey. Firefighters, uh, thirty-seven responses, twenty-eight of which were EMS assists. Uh, they also did a walkthrough of, uh, the hospital, the new hospital wing. Police Department, one felony, five misdemeanors, five warrants served. Uh, they also did some public service work by, uh, going to meet with Kitty College and letting the kids see the, uh, the squad trucks. Uh, water treatment, Indian App, I'm gonna be, uh, working with Cody, who's the chair of the water committee. An Indianapolis engineering firm has inspected our side channel reservoir along with, uh, Jerry Quendry. They've presented a proposal which includes seeking some federal grant opportunities. The side channel is really important for us to continue to be able to make water, uh, for our citizens, and, uh, there are a number of trees that have grown into that dam that could cause trouble if we get a flood in that region, or more flooding, let's put it that way. Uh, water distribution, we, uh, repaired a service line leak, uh, last week. Uh, Street and Bridge, Robert reports mowing has become a major issue with the wet spring, as departments also have its hands full with, uh, limbs and, uh, patching streets. And, uh, your guess is, give us mine, exactly what it means when the sewer plant says that they're pumping down the east oxidation ditch, installing the new tripods for the mixers and replacing the diffusers. So you should rest assured that that's all being taken care of at the sewer plant. Are there any questions about the mayor's report? Visalaneous, other items for the, uh, council that they've discussed?
Have I got the deal worked out with the industrial trust on the ground south of town?
Uh, yeah, we're, we're working through that, uh, they've signed off, I've ordered title work, I'm, I'm waiting on a title work to come back, and it should be any day, and I can get the, um, deed and everything to them.
Anything else?
Is there anything else going on with the garment factory?
Yeah, I've, uh, I've met with them, and, uh, we're working towards getting that, uh, probably by the next council meeting, we should have, you know, ordinance that'll satisfy that, the, uh, title company, that was the big holdup, um, that we had a, a problem with, and, um, and then after that, I, I, you know, I think it'll be, I think it'll be resolved at that time, so.
And the Clark ground has transferred?
What's that?
The Clark ground has...
Yeah, that was, I forget when that was, but, yeah, yes.
And I did send in the paperwork, uh, this week for, to try to get that ground taxes in through the Department of Revenue.
What's the status on the light building houses? Problems?
We got a, we got a lo- a lot of long lists. We, we're trying to do what we can, we get at least three or four calls a, a day, there, we still have access to the, uh, the database, base, if you wanna go in and see what we are as far as...
Well, I know that there was a few properties that we keep, certain people keep on pushing back. Why, why are we not following up on that?
I can speak to two of them, and they are being, uh, dealt with, um, from the legal system. I don't wanna say too much for an app, if that's okay, but, uh, that's kinda where they're at, so.
If nothing else, um, I would entertain a motion going to executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Mayor, what can the FOP contracts be discussed in open session?
We don't rediscuss labor contracts in open session, Tom. Never have.
Uh, who was the first? And who was second? Did I give a second?
I'll be second, but I can say it now.
And the reasons to go in is executive session to discuss, uh, section two C twenty-one, minutes of closed session meetings, and two C two, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives. Roll call vote, Atterbury?
Yes.
Eckelberry?
Yes.
Lampley?
Yes.
Lizzenby?
Yes.
McGill?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Reiver?
Yes.
Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, it, it, we, we could come back in to, um, to vote, we could not come back into vote, but we'll come back to, uh, be able to close the meeting in total, and, uh, if, if, uh, we do to do a vote, be more than happy to entertain any calls from the media.
Thank you. All right, we're not going to take any additional action tonight as a part of our agenda. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?